All right, good evening, thank you. If you could please stand and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So we have a few presentations, pretty excited about them. We'll go ahead and go right to our music department presentation.
Sure, I'd like to introduce Mr. Norris and his students here tonight. The jazz band that is taking a trip. And I'm gonna allow Mr. Norris to go ahead from there.
Well, first off, we want to thank you for proving this venture almost a year ago. It was a little scary not knowing what things were going to be like with the COVID scenario, but we kept forging ahead and yes, we actually got to go. I think what you're gonna hear is just a sample of what this group has been up to for the last couple of years. We've been really fortunate that they've been able to rehearse, they've been able to perform, and now that things are starting to open back up to take advantage of some of these things. This is a, I won't say it's a once-in-a-lifetime trip, but it's sort of it. The last trip of this stature that I was able to take with a jazz ensemble was about 2006, so you could do the math. It's been a while. Most of our trips have been day trips and regional type things. We haven't been able to do anything quite on this scale since we went to Berkeley back in the early 2000s. So it's these types of things that really set these kids up for life, learning and wanting to go further and take music to the next level, or just pursue it as an application. New Orleans is a city of music, it's a city of musicians, and I think it was really evident from the moment we walked in that this was gonna be a really, really fun time, and it turned out to be. I'll let a couple of them share afterwards, but we'd like to open and show you one of the songs that we played. This is a piece that was actually not written in New Orleans, but it's got a certain New Orleans flavor to it. I think you'll like it, it's called "Cornbread." I failed to mention before, I did put an itinerary in front of you, so if you hadn't had a chance to see it, you can see it was a jam packed four days. I mean, we were up early, we went to bed late. It was nonstop, pretty much almost eighteen hours every day. So we left tired because we got back about the same time, which was about 2:00 AM, so it's a busy four days. We want to tell them a little bit about what we learned.
Well, I'd like to thank you for proving our trip first of all. It was an amazing experience, thanks to the chat rounds and everybody that made it possible. And the culture down there is absolutely amazing, music, you know, going to Preservation Hall, into the Woodrow Clinic, and learning from the masters is quite an experience. And then to see them like the next day out on the streets playing with everybody else is quite a cool experience. The food was also.
I also gave you a link to some, they wrote some nice things about it, so if they are a little tongue tied, don't hold it against them. You should read most of their road comments.
If you get an opportunity to read, click on the link that he'd sent this morning and read some of their reflections, it was pretty cool.
I'd like to know about the haunted tour.
When it comes to the haunted tour, there was a little bit of a mishap. We, as a story, our tour guide was John, we loved him. He got us lost, okay? We ended up showing up late to the tour and we experienced about three of the stories, and while they were very incredible, it was after about ten miles of walking. It might be kind of fast, it was a little rough. If we had actually got the tour under the timeframe that we would have, normally we would have finished when the rain started instead of starting when the rain started. So yeah, it was a little different, and literally that was the day we did walk about ten miles of walking. So to go an extra mile out of the way doesn't sound like much until you're talking about eight and a half miles already on your feet. So it was a little rough.
I'm impressed that you were loaded on the bus at 2:30 AM and went to bed at 11:00 PM. I would still be sleeping.
Well luckily, because of the way it turned out, we were supposed to go later in the week, and we would have gotten back originally on Sunday, so it was bad because we got back and we did, because we actually had a day and a half to recuperate. It was great though.
Thank you all so much for landing. The culture down there and seeing all the music, like on the streets, now just like performances that people play, that's just incredible. And the food was amazing, definitely. We got to go to a parade, which was awesome. Like no parade you guys probably ever went to. The people were so immersed in what was going on. And again, we always said, go learn from the masters and sit right next to them and talk to them, ask questions, and it was just amazing.
Yeah, the leader of the group for the Preservation Hall, and that band changes like on a daily basis, but our leader that day, the trumpet player, and literally the next day, we were in the French Quarter, and we hear this band playing, and we look, and it's our guy. It's the guy that was talking to us. Played in a totally different group, but it was still amazing music and just, yeah. So for them to see that, and to also get feedback from the Loyola people, the jazz chair person there was really impressed with the kids, how well prepared. He was actually very bummed that we couldn't stay and work with him longer, but he had a group that was supposed to rehearse on, I think it was two o'clock, and the kids kept coming in to get ready for rehearsal, like, oh, there's people in here, so they kept leaving. But it was a great experience, kind of blessed it. If we ever, we'd go back someday, if we had to go back. I think he would like to work with them again. They enjoyed our presentation.
Thank you so much.
Song two?
We can do a second part, sure. This is actually a Broadway song from back in the 40s. It was originally written by Jerome Kerr, who did a lot of Broadway stuff. This is a little bit of a twist, you might recognize, but if you don't, it's a song called "Pick Yourself Up." Someone's in a hurry, they have to hurry. I see yours.
Thank you again for this opportunity. We appreciate it.
All right, next we had our future scholar.
I don't know how I'm gonna beat that.
I know. You can dance.
Yeah, dance would be fine.
All right, so New York State Public High School Athletic Association, they recognize those teams and individuals that excel in the classroom. And this year, we have three teams that qualified as Scholar Athletic Teams. Scholar Athletic Team is the combined grade point average, where seventy-five percent of the team has to be over ninety. And like I said, we had three, all three were girls teams. Girls Basketball, they had a ninety-two point two average, and the athletes that represented or that contributed to the nineties was Emma Simmons, Emma Constable, Anna Dewey, Ava Sariglano, Michaela Bales, Emily Russo, and Zoe Sullivan. Again, they had a ninety-two point two. Girls Bowling had a ninety-two point three average. Those athletes were Megan Mazzarella, Cassandra Cole, Holly Bookout, and Piper Stell Del Rio. Girls Winter Track had a ninety-six point eight average. And those student athletes were Camille Bagley, Isabel Briggs, Madison Burnett, Megan Lewis, Leanna Newbert, Alex Newbert, Fabiana Nicholas, and Deja Taylor. Again, they had a ninety-six point eight. The state association also recognizes individual athletes that attain a ninety or above. And these athletes are from Boys Basketball, Connor Bacon and Danny Morris. From Boys Bowling, Kyle Smith and Nathan Marchison. From Boys Track, Sam Bagley, Connor Everly, Gavin Granger, Aiden Moody, Michael Morrison, Travis Wheaton. And then from varsity wrestling, Keith Bacon and Aiden Robinson. So they'll receive a certificate, and they receive pins, recognizing their achievements. Again, a good number, a little over thirty athletes. And within those teams, we did have some represent our school at the New York State Competition. Trevor Harrington went for wrestling. Kayla McEwen and Deja Taylor went for indoor track. And then Reece Yeomans and Cassandra Cole went for bowling. So these kids are working hard and they're representing well.
Thank you. Really well-rounded students, that's awesome.
Appreciate it, thanks, Eric.
I feel bad for you, even, I get it. I mean, it's a good budget, it's still.
Keep a good, good role. So now we're gonna transition to the budget. But yeah, I mean, this is a good budget, there we go. So here's the numbers and cents. So this is the first draft as of March of eighth. Just to preface it, as we get into this, is the state doesn't adopt their budget until April 1, so things may change a little bit as things shake out. But for right now, Mr. Pat Lovich has done a good job teaching me this process as we're going through this. But again, the numbers right now are projected as we'll go through this. On the right hand side, you see a couple of photos. I just think that's awesome because we have a beautiful campus, and we took those photos as part of Mr. Chris Brantley, who is a Bosse's employee at DCMO Bosse's. He did our video of our campuses summer that's on our website, and took some photos too, so we stole these photos from here just to show off beautiful campuses, and I thought that was awesome, so I wanted to put those on there. But really, to talk about our strategic plan. It's something that I know that I mentioned frequently, not only at the board here, but also within our meetings that we have within the district on a regular basis. Because the strategic plan was done with purpose, right? In 2017, 18, the board and administrative team spent a lot of time putting together a very thoughtful, a very practical strategic plan that focuses on teaching, learning, student support, engagement, communication, and effective, efficient systems. With a very purposeful mission of empowering all students to make meaningful, real contributions to their community and beyond. And you know, we saw some of the contributions, right? The jazz band, and students are able to do, and you know, our student athletes be able to excel outside of the classroom. Just good, well-rounded people. The next piece too is what we talked about this summer is prioritize focused areas to build off of the strategic plan. Again, focusing on student achievement or the student support piece, the culture, climate positivity, and the hashtag Warrior Pride. Our focus on professional learning communities and collaborative teams, and then our commitment to community partnerships and enrichment. And staying true to those as we make decisions, the numbers and cents piece, but we make decisions based on the work that's been done to guide us. So I appreciate the work that's been done to guide us here. Again, just to focus on some student support, because I think it's awesome to look at pictures of kids and listen to kids play and hear their accomplishments. So I thought that was really kind of neat, some of the things that our kids are doing, whether it be Mr. Norris and the Triumph cleaning up the highway on Rudy, or whether it be Mr. Yurka and his group of adults helping out in our elementary school. Our collaborative teams, and then again, I know we talk heavily about professional learning communities, you know, with our teaching staff and things, but they're collaborative teams all over, whether it be our transportation, whether it be our buildings and grounds, or up here with our food service. We have great staff, and I think it's important to recognize the work that they do on a daily basis, and they do so collectively. And then our community partnerships, just to throw a couple out with the Masonville Fire Company that comes in on Fire Safety Prevention Week, helping out and showing fire trucks to little kids, because little kids love fire trucks. I still love fire trucks. Never lose them. And then, you know, just to give an example of our community partnerships with the City Federal Credit Union, some of the things we're doing, providing opportunities for kids with that too. Now let's take a look at some dollars and cents. So taking a look at current year, what you'll see is twenty-one, twenty-two school year in comparison to the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Just a couple of things to point out here is foundation aid. You'll see the jump in foundation aid, but if you remember, foundation aid is being fully implemented, which is a great thing for the Sydney Central School District. It began last year, there's a three-year implementation of this. Last year, we received about a $700,000 increase in our foundation aid to put us at the twelve-two mark, because you'll see it there for current year. The second year of foundation aid for the Sydney Central School District puts us at a $1.3 million increase in foundation aid. And next year, will make up the remainder of the increase in year three. I don't know exactly what that number is, but it'll be somewhere between like three and four hundred thousand somewhere, which would put Sydney Central School District at a fully funded hundred percent. For years, we were funded at an eighty-three percent rate for the foundation aid, so this year you'll see the 1.3 jump.
Is that foundation, once we get to a hundred percent, should that stay there?
No, typically you'll see, I'll conservatively say a two or three percent increase in foundation aid every year. We did, we were flat at eleven million, five hundred thousand and change for a couple of years where they kept foundation aid flat. But typically, you could, we somewhat budgeted the two percent, three percent foundation aid increase on a conservative piece, but it should increase. They have frozen it before, the state has frozen the foundation aid before.
Well, frozen's better than decrease.
I just wanted to make sure it wasn't like one of, you know, that you go up to a hundred percent and then they start reducing it for efficiencies or whatever. In some districts, some districts will, they don't want foundation aid to be fully funded with this, because they will actually, they'll lose some money based on the movement and things like that. So this is good for Sydney Central School District, very good. You look at your Bosse's, Bosse's comparable, you get Bosse's aid a year out. So if you saw, if you look at the current year, two point two million, because we didn't run the summer camps the previous year. So you'll see Bosse's aid coming back up to where it has been, run the two point three million mark because the summer camps have built back in there. High tax aid, hardware technology aid, software library, textbook aid. Those stayed relatively the same comparable, depends on how much you spend and what you give back. We always try to maximize those lines, because if you don't spend, you lose it, so we always maximize those lines. And just as a note, the asterisks on the side, those are just as projection numbers, right? Those are projections, they're not set in stone yet. Transportation aid, you see transportation aid is up just a little bit, about a hundred thousand or so, and that could be due to, you know, reverse rate on mileage, more mileage last year, things like that that come back in. Building aid is two point six million. And just as a side note with that, is the Capitol project that we just closed out, all the site work, things that we've done around campus here. That is not included in that number yet, and the Capitol Outlay Project, the hundred thousand dollar project, the pool cover, that aid is not represented in there either. We anticipate that aid will come back up around the two point eight mark, so we'll generate that aid most likely throughout this, the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, so that'll be back up where it's at. And then other, is just described as other from the state. So a total comparison from current year to twenty-two, twenty-three school year is you'll see about one point six million dollar increase in state aid. And again, just to summarize that up, is the one point three million dollar increase in foundation aid and the three hundred thousand with the increase in Bosse's aid, so there's your one point six million dollar increase with the state aid. So total revenue projections, so if you carry that twenty-seven million, seven hundred forty-six thousand, two hundred eighty-two dollars over for your state aid, the local tax share, what we collect, and again, I'm just going off of current year right now, is six million, one hundred thirty thousand, nine hundred seventeen dollars. We had talked about it as the board level here, is our tax cap for this year is two percent. On my left, the two percent, sorry, the two percent would generate a hundred and twenty-two thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars. And the asterisk is next to that is because we had talked about the board without not going to the cap. So we did not include the hundred and twenty-two thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars in the total projected revenue for next year. It's something that I know we collectively have It's something that I know we collectively have talked about as a board is maybe going 0% this year and then reevaluating at the end of next year to perhaps go back up to the cap and things like that. So that number is not included in that. Now, if things change, right, we can definitely include that in there. Miscellaneous revenue is a $615,260. Miscellaneous revenue would be like the lease from the Masonville campus, health insurance rebates, things like that that would follow into that. Looking to incorporate again, $150,000 in debt service and appropriate from the fund balance, $1,250,000 as year-to-year as we did last year as well too, for a total revenue projection of $28,892,459. And again, that number for the tax levy is not included in that just because that's kind of what we had talked about, but I wanted to show what that number could be or would be. To transition to the anticipated expenses, you'll see on the left-hand side, the 21, 22 current year and then the 22, 23 projected year. I'm going to break down each one of these categories. We started this a couple of years as breaking it down by the thousands, the 2000s, the 5000s, the 7000s, the 9000 category. And it's summarized up by the category headings, general support thousands. And what I'll do at the end of those comparisons is I'll show you the change in each one of those, dollar finger change from the year-to-year. So again, just to summarize up what the 1,000s expenses are, what they're made up of, any Board of Education expenses, chief school administrator, myself, auditing and purchasing personnel, any type of public relations services, and then district clerk, business administration, records management, Bosie's administrative costs. That's where you'll see the Bosie's budget for the administrative costs and the capital lend on that. The 2,000 line, this is the instructional line and you'll see the greatest increase in the instructional line, right? That's where foundation aid goes up. So we wanted to make sure that we do increase instruction, right? That's our focus. So you'll see everything from curriculum and development supervision, teachings, computer assisted technology, co-curriculars, health services, teachers, right, interscholastic athletics, social workers, all of that falls under your 2,000 categories or your instructional. Your transportation line is your 5,000s. Just as a comparison with this is last year, we had, we budgeted the general fund 265 passenger buses, which were around the 253,000 mark. This year, we're budgeting into the general fund 135 passenger bus and 124 passenger bus with a wheelchair lift. Ours are outdated, they need to be replaced. So those are two that are put in there. Those are around 157,000, I believe, between those two. So we'll build those right into the general, the general fund for that. And you'll see those broken out into the line-by-line item budget, which we'll get in April. And you'll also see in the budget newsletter that describes these purchases, just like what we did with the 265 passenger buses involved. The 7,000s, this is recreation, community access. This is not a big ticket item by any means, but we budgeted $5,625. Last year was 10,000. And really what this is, is community access, right? These are like the lifeguards for the pool, for our community swim in the morning, our family swim in the afternoon or in the evening and things. And the nominal fees that we charge, this is the basketball in the morning as well too. So the nominal fees that we charge really offset what we have to spend with us. So we reduce that line just because we're not spending it. And it's not a big ticket item by any means, but that is the community access category. The last category, what we call the 9,000s, these are all of your employment benefit and debt service lines from your state retirement for your TRS, your teacher retirement system, your ERS, your employee retirement system, life insurance, dental insurance, unemployment insurance, workers' compensation, all of that falls under the employment benefit debt service line. So just to be able to compare from the current year of 21, 22 to 22, 23 school year, you'll see a dollar change. And again, some of the changes are contractual obligations, some of the changes are an increase in instructional programming, right, that we plan to do. You'll see transportation is flat. Again, we had built in the 253,000 for the two buses last year versus 157,000 this year. So it's kind of flat. And then employment benefits for the 9,000s. So you'll see an increase of year-to-year of $1,178,542 from the year-to-year expense category. And some of the things you may ask, like, wait a minute, we had an increase of revenue of 1.3, 1.6, like why 1.2 regular increase? And really what it is, is Mr. Pavlovich and I take a look at like some efficiencies and trends, right? What are we seeing over the last three years? We're better to hone in on some of the categories and get a little tighter with the budget is really what that comes out to. So just kind of a quick table when you're looking at revenue on the left-hand side and expense on the right-hand side, things that you've just seen before. Again, I just wanted to point out that the tax levy, the 2% that we can go to our cap is not included in that, in that revenue. So if things change, we would have to go back to and change that a little bit. But as far as kind of the direction that we're going at now, I think the last time we spoke, we're moving forward with this model here where it's not included. For total revenue and total expenses, right around the $28,892,459. But again, these are projections until we get the budget in April 1st. These are still a little bit moving, but this is, this is pretty good, pretty close. What you can expect next is that April 20th is, again, we'll go through and do a budget update of what you just saw right now, any changes that might occur after April 1. The line-by-line expense categories, you'll have that, that'll be posted on the board docs, will be posted online as well too, but we won't go to the line-by-line in detail that we'll be getting here, but you'll have that and it'll be posted in the budget, budget posted as well too, that are at the libraries and on the website and things like that. And then the adoption of the budget April 20th as well.
Is that the Bosie's budget night too? Was that the April 20th?
Yep.
Just might say whether it's Tuesday.
So it's aligned with, it's aligned with the Bosie's, thanks Eric. It's aligned with the Bosie's meeting for the Bosie's budget as well too. Any questions with that?
Good job breaking it down. Thank you. Thank you. All right, next we have our STA report. How's it doing?
Hi, I'm Eddie. Thank you. Good evening. So I'm not exactly sure what Mr. Bullock has shared with you, but as of yesterday, we, the STA and the district have come to a verbal agreement for negotiations for our collective bargaining agreement. How much do you know about the steps that happen next? Anything, some things, nothing?
Well, I think he knows how to.
I think you've covered it all. That's probably.
So on Friday, at the students conference day, at the very end of the day, we got a little bit of time, the STA will, the negotiations team will present what we have agreed to at the table to our members. And at that point, we will have any questions that have to come up. And then from there, the next couple of weeks, the membership will vote to ratify the tentative agreement that Mr. Bullock and I will sign any time. And then from there, it comes to you and you vote whether you'd like to fund the agreement. And after that, we draw up the contracts and we sign again and we move on for the next three years. So we hope that that process will run smoothly from there on. We did, it was very collaborative with Mr. Bullock and Mr. Pavlovich. Mr. Walts is our chief negotiator and he and I sat at the table and we had lots of money, many discussions over seven meetings. So it went relatively smoothly. We learned a lot from the process and we'll, we'll do better next time, you know, to make it smoother. The second piece of news is that our community partnership from, that's STA's happening, is called Share the Bounty, which is a monthly free dinner for the community. It used to be at the Methodist Church, but the Sacred Heart Catholic Church has taken over. And so the STA on Thursday, March 24th, from 4:30 to 6:30 will be having a CD dinner that's free to everyone in the community. It will be a flyer that will go home with all of the elementary children. They're the ones that take home the flyers from high school. So they will take home a flyer and hopefully we'll get, we've had up to 200 families come, but it's my understanding that that is not the case over the last few months with Share the Bounty. But we're hopeful that people will come and share a nice meal and enjoy the fellowship of other people in the community. So we're gearing up for that. I think that's it. Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you for doing that.
Thanks. Mr. Buck?
Just a couple of quick updates is first, I want to thank Mr. Norris and the jazz band students for coming in and sharing their experience. Because when they, when they got back from it and that was Mr. Norris who said, hey, gotta go, and he was glowing like a high school kid, right? I mean, it really was. I mean, and just, I give him a lot of credit. He just always is trying to advance his kids and their program and the opportunities for kids and, and listening him to talk about it, it was, it was cool. I mean, he was just smiling ear to ear, just, just grinning about it. And then, and then for him to have the kids share their experiences and take the time and write a reflection on that, it was just, it was really neat. So anyways, I thank them. Just want to thank Mr. Carl for recognizing the winner scholar teams and the athletes and recognizing the kids that made the state tournament, which is cool. Only one of those students that made the state tournament was a senior, Kayla McEwen, right, and made the state meet her senior year during winter track. And Coach Sims went indoor track and outdoor track and told her early in her career, like, you're going to go to the state meet before you graduate. So I think that's quite remarkable. And the rest of the kids are not seniors, right? They'll come back for more, I'm sure. So anyways, thanks, Mr. Carl. It's National School Social Worker Week, so I just want to thank Mrs. Anne Breiten and Mrs. Haley Gray for all they do for the Sydney Central School District, two social workers here. Just quick is the junior, senior high schools offering a new opportunity for students called the Gamers Club. And this is Mr. Gray and Ms. Lockdale, they're the advisors. They're in the second week of the club. They have 30 students participating in it and the main focus is this, for students to have an opportunity to interact and engage with peers after school. And they're doing it through the Gamers Club, eventually maybe going into esports league, but we wanted at least to see where the interest is, kind of get it, get it off the grounds with this piece of it here. So thank them for, for creating that opportunity and running with that opportunity. Thank you to Mr. Stannen, thank you to Ms. Mack and Ms. Rogan for really heading this up. And thank you for the people that are donating gaming systems, Mr. Johnson and many others. So it's, it's been a collective effort, it is. So. So if you have, if you have different things you want to clean up, glasses, you have anything to do. Next is there's a save the date for April 28th for the Shenango County School Board's annual dinner. The event's going to be the Kansas Walk to Country Club on Thursday, April 28th, it begins at 5:30, dinner's at 6:00 and the programs can follow. So if you're interested in that, go ahead and just let me know that I can, I can register and follow. Again, let's save the date for April 28th for that. Next is just a COVID reminder, I try not to talk too much about COVID ever because it just shouldn't be the focus of what we do, but I do want to just provide a reminder that last week, we sent out some reminders through the school messenger system and a sample classroom letter that's going home with kids or close contacts. So kids in the elementary school, so for example, if there's a positive case in Mr. Bullock's fifth grade class, then we're sending the sample letter home with the other students in the class or the teacher to be able to communicate. And then if it's in the high school, it would go home with close contacts and then offering at-home kids, test kids if they want as well too. So that was the piece of that. And I just want to take a second to just say thank you and recognize some people that have been involved in this whole process. Mr. Stannen, our district's COVID coordinator, who's worked tremendously hard with this whole process. Mrs. Boyce, Mrs. Rose, Ms. Hoskins, who are our day-to-day RNs and LPNs that are, that are just unbelievable at doing what they're doing right now. So just give them a lot of credit. And then also I want to give some recognition to Ms. Corbett, Ms. Jones, Ms. Corbett, Denise Jones, Jenny McDonough, and Michelle Reynolds, who are substitute health office, support RNs and LPNs that come in and help us with their weekly testing and just give support in the health office. They have been great all year long, so we wanted to make sure that we give them some presents and thank you for the work that they've done. Another thing, just really quick, is capital project wise, I know I've included this in the updates and it kind of made me evolve with this, but we're looking to do a capital project vote and it'll be in September of 2022. We'll stay on the same timeline for work to begin in the summer of 2023. I know we initially talked about maybe trying to get the V referendum, but to do things right, slow down and really think things through, makes sense to do in September and we can stick on the same timeline. And then we're planning to do scope of the work, a presentation to the board, probably at the main meeting, where you'll kind of get to see some, some nice schematics of what we're talking about. And then if you have any questions from there, we'll go there. But that'll be where you kind of get to see some pretty pictures of what we're, what we're thinking about doing. The next, on the board, you'll see the Chris approval project. It's one of the action items at the very end, but I just want to make sure I highlight that. This is the first round of the funding, if you will, that's going to provide automation to our HVAC system. We have about 10% of our controls that are not on the same system. So then we'll be 100% on the Allerton control systems for ease of use and efficiencies and then air conditioning on the second floor of the junior, senior high school. As Mrs. Dewey mentioned, is the collective bargaining unit contracts will all be ready. I know I mentioned this a number of months ago, is they will all be ready at the April 4th meeting. I know I've, we've set some expectations all the way through this process that we want to align all of the collective bargaining units and have them approved for your approval on the April 20th board meeting and they will all be there. So to finish it up, yesterday, I know you've gotten, I think it's seven updates on the contract, you'll have any one that's ready to go that kind of summarizes what the STA one, but. So we're very pleased with the collaborative process to be able to do, first go around a negotiation for myself and with, you know, the STA, Mrs. Dewey, Mr. Walts, and Mr. Pavlovich, is a collaborative process for sure, right? I'm talking about ways to make the district stronger and just pleased with the process of that, so. We have a superintendent conference day this Friday, March 18th. And if Mrs. Johnson wants to share just a couple tidbits on the focus of that?
So it's our final conference day of the 21, 22 school year. We're trying to say that out loud. The morning will be focused on some logistics, some work that we need to accomplish. We will spend some time on the three through eight, the New York State three through eight assessments, the training and administration and proctoring. We did give one day of those assessments last year, but it appears we will be giving the full assessment this year. So just reminding all of us of what those good best practices are when it comes to proctoring the assessments. But in the afternoon, we're really going to focus on that priority area of culture, climate, and positivity, specifically staff and staff wellness. So staff, we solicited proposals from staff members and our colleagues, K-12 administrative and teacher staff have volunteered to facilitate a variety of sessions. Some of us might participate in an intensive cardio workout. Thank you, Ms. Mack. Others may choose to go for a walk on the campus or do coloring or do some dance or crocheting or meditate. So a variety of opportunities for staff to work with their colleagues in a different manner. Poetry was another one. But an opportunity for colleagues to work across the campus, to try something different, you know, at your own pace, at your own level of comfort. And then those events will wrap up around 2:15 and then the STA and SSRPO will have some time in the afternoon for their meetings. So kind of a nice way to celebrate, get our hard work done and over with in the morning and then have an opportunity to enjoy each other and continue to build that culture here at Sydney Central School District.
Thanks, Eric. And the last thing I have, just as spring sports started yesterday, we have 170 student athletes right now participating in spring sports and then modified sports will start Monday, March 28th. So good, great participation as we have had in the fall and in the winter with 170 student athletes. It's great.
I have to say on the capital project that you guys have the air conditioning, the air handles, so I looked over, that was really well done by you guys for, for getting all of that allocated from the COVID funds and it's, looks like a great use and, you know, I looked at how you guys did that. The air conditioning alone is just, you know, I know there's just like a few weeks, but it is unbearable, you know, for the, in the school and all you can do is open a window or whatever. So the fact that that could be included in that grant, that was, you guys did a really nice job on that. It's great to see that happen.
Thanks. And the last thing I just wanted to mention, just because I forgot and forgot to say something, Mr. Carl, like our boys, or I'm sorry, our boys volleyball, I'm sorry, boys volleyball won the MAC championship, which is pretty cool. If you didn't see the sirens. And then our badminton and table tennis won as well too. So we're crushing it in some ways. Just wanted to share that.
There were a couple nights the sirens were going, I'm like, we won something. I don't know.
So those are the sirens. Boys volleyball, at the time, they, they get so excited about it. Past friend of Sydney Central School District, Courtney Kimmore, is back for teaching and she was the coach. So that was really cool for her debut of a coach and then Mr. Beckwith coaches the table tennis and badminton as well too. So I know that was really cool.
My son was on both teams. He played, he played badminton with boys doubles and then he played on the volleyball team. Five foot four himself, he's got it down. He's a setter. They all know their role.
No, I just thought I would show you that.
That's cool. He feeds a new kid that's six five, I guess.
Yeah.
He gets to jump out of the gym. The Simmons kind of.
Anybody else have any questions or comments for Mr. Bullock? Okay, thank you very much. Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the minutes from the regular Board of Education meeting held on February 8th, 2022.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie? Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the personnel consent agenda as presented. Second. All those in favor?
Carrie, can I say something real quick?
Yes, of course.
I just wanted to, just take a second. I know I'm hearing that we can be updating about the donation, but I would make sure that I say this publicly in the meeting, too. I just want to thank the Unity Go Science Foundation for having interest in the Sydney Central School District. So the Unity Go Science Foundation, we have been meeting with now for the last couple of months. And they had some interest in some of our programs, wanted to support some of our programs. They have long, they have long supported programs at Unity Go and may continue to support some programs there as well, too. But we met with some key people there, Dr. Jonathan Davis, who was a, as a veterinarian practice here in New York City, who is kind of in charge of that, along with a group of other people. And said, what programs do you have at the Sydney Central School District? We're interested in supporting some of those. So I immediately thought of the upper watershed project, the Upper Siskiyou Waterhead Project that Mr. Townsend's overseen for years and years and years. That was a grant-funded position by State Farm and that money is, is to wind up over the years and almost non-existent. And what a great way to help sustain that program. So Mr. Townsend did a great job meeting with Dr. Davis and myself and putting together a proposal for how we would best utilize donations. And so that was the $5,000 donation for the watershed project. And also, Mr. Yurka does a great job with our Sydney Students Against Disruptive Decisions Program. There's a lot of kids that participate in it, they do a lot of great things. They have a big and little program with sixth graders. I mean, they just does a tremendous amount of work with that. And we're always kind of looking for different opportunities for them, whether it be leadership opportunities for Teen Institute, we sponsor them, or we help sponsor those kids. Or whether it be through scholarship funds for students that are in SAD, right? Potentially like seniors in SAD and then worked all the way up through and being able to do that. So they like both of those programs. So offered donations to both watershed program and the SAD program. And so I just want to say thank you for that. And these are, these are donations that are not just one and done. Like this is looking for a long-term sustainability with these things, too. So I just want to make sure that we said thank you very much to Unity Go Science Foundation, to Dr. Davis for their interest in the Sydney Central School District.
When did the SAD aggregation change? I mean, I'm showing my age.
Mr. Yurka did that, right? He wanted to put the words Sydney in that. Instead of just students, he wanted Sydney Students Against Disruptive Decisions, so.
But when they go to destructive decisions?
He remembered it was drunk driving.
Yeah. I remember that a hundred years ago. I know I'm a million year old.
Hold on, I was a health teacher at Big of the High School at the time. Ms. Mack, our SAD organization?
It was destructive decisions, not.
Yeah, so it's got to go back.
It's gonna just sound like, I don't know, a couple of years ago. I don't know, two, three.
I'm gonna go with eighteen years or so.
Oh, man. Yeah, I knew. When I was in high school, it was.
It was drunk driving.
Now it's destructive decisions. I would, yeah, it's good to know. I would have been calling it drunk driving still.
But anyway, just want to make sure that it's all right. I know that you had a second.
Yeah. Yeah, oh, okay. We're on, okay, great, thank you. Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the consent agenda as presented. So moved. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie?
Thank you.
All right. Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the FFA Winter Camp Weekend at Oswego Gage Educational Center, April 1st through 3rd, 2022. Second. All those, oh, a discussion?
These are the ones that were, a couple of these trips, I think I mentioned in the week in the update. There wasn't until they were, hey, we can do these, so then we put them on.
And did I say it right?
That was really good.
Thank you. I sometimes can't say Sydney, right? But I said, all right. All those in favor? Yeah.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie? Thank you. Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve an overnight field trip on May 12th to 14th, 2022 for the annual New York State FFA convention. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie? Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the admittance of the non-resident students as presented for the remainder of the 2021-2022 school year. Second. Any discussion?
Those are some staff children and then two children that have been here that moved second semester. I want to finish.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carrie?
Do they plan on coming back next year and loving with that addition?
As an attending here is non-resident tuition, as far as I know.
Because I know, I think one was in 10th grade or something. That's, I don't know if that was a stat member or if that was a move, but they're pretty close to graduation.
Yeah. I don't know the specifics on there, but I would assume that they have physically moved and want to continue coming here.
Hopefully.
Yep. More than likely.
Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to recognize the civil service position of lifeguard. Second. Discussion?
This is just to recognize a position through civil service. We always had a pool aide and there's no such thing as a pool aide according to civil service. So we're trying to align those titles. And it is a civil service position, just like what we did with the farm to school position, except that was a creed, we had a creed that position. This is just recognizing it, that we often has position.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie? Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the legal notice for the public hearing, budget vote, and election to be held on May 17th, 2022. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie? Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to commit to the purchase of technology equipment for the instructional technology service from Bruntier BOSI's as presented. Second. Discussion?
Is there a reason for finding anything?
So the BT BOSI's IPA, so it's the instructional technology purchasing agreement. So it allows you to, just like a lease type deal, so you can purchase those over the course of five years? So you can, you have greater buying capacity?
Well, in five years, the 5% rate on that might be looking very attractive in a few years. You look back at it, it's not a bad rate now. And, you know, three to five years from now, that may look like an amazing rate. I was just wondering if it was like a lease program.
Yeah, yep, yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie? Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to adopt the deferred compensation plan for employees of the state of New York. Second. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie? Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the capital, approve capital work specifically updating remaining Allerton controls to automated logic district-wide installation of air conditioning on the second floor of junior senior high school. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie?
Need to get it now, my turn. Shame never.
Next.
So next, we have board member comments. Ready, ready? Okay. I don't know. It's a question. Oh, well, I guess I'll just ask one. How are the, how's the mask, you know, mask transition going?
Good, yeah, good. There are some staff that are wearing masks, there are some kids that are wearing masks, both at the secondary and the elementary. Yeah, I mean, I guess we haven't heard of anything one way or another. Just some choosing to wear it, some not, some choosing to wear it. Okay?
Good.
Haven't heard any issues.
Carrie, have you seen an uptick in sick students?
No, that's the last. Sick hasn't been.
Sick or just?
Yeah. Yes. Yep. Uptick in stomach bug, flu.
All that stuff.
AJ was having all last week with a head cold.
Anything like that, that makes sense. I know, Tony, you must understand, I'm sorry, you speak on a regular basis, but that's pretty accurate, right? Those are uptick.
Yeah, stomach bugs gone through two waves. Flu about three weeks ago, all flew. And we're back again with some laryngitis type issues for the second time again this year.
We've had everything hit our house and we've tested over and over because we even bought extra test rehmanners on and stuff. Not kind of what, none of it was COVID, but.
All those.
Hit the house.
You know, if you have.
5,000 in my office.
Well, you know, if you have little kids, they're back to licking windows. You're a first grader, I mean, I know, stomach bug right through the first three days.
Well, I've been helping Julie in the nursery school, so it's like, yeah, every bug out there.
Super immune system. But yeah, that's a good question, but no, we should definitely increase that. Probably last three weeks.
Yep.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? All right. So we'll have a motion to adjourn.